Mrs. Black.
Here.
Great, thank you. If you are able to, please stand for the invocation followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Father God, we come before your holy presence today to once again say thank you for all the abundant and bountiful blessings that you continue to provide to each of us, our families, and all of our residents of our Saint Mary Parish. We continue to ask and thank you for giving your wisdom and understanding to our superintendent, Dr. Faganbusch, school board president, Mrs. Black, and to all of our other school board members that will allow and enable them to effectively discuss and subsequently take action as needed on all items comprising today's agenda. And finally, as our schools have safely reopened for our new 2024-25 school session, we want to thank you for protecting all of our schools, our offices, our employees, our students and their families from all harm and danger throughout the entire school year. We ask these blessings in your name, in the name of Jesus, and Father, may you continue to bless and prosper our Saint Mary Parish, our state of Louisiana, and most importantly, our United States of America. Amen.
All right. First up, recognition of newly appointed positions. Ms. Este.
Good evening. We have quite a few appointments to recognize tonight, so I'll talk fast. The first one I'd like to introduce is Mrs. Janet Francois. Mrs. Francois began in Saint Mary Parish as a paraprofessional, where she served as a math tutor and a special education para. She earned her degree in education. She spent her teaching career at Patterson Junior High, then earned her certification as a librarian and transferred to ME Norman. From there, she served as an SEL coach at WP Foster, and then she moved as an SEL coach to Patterson High School as a math teacher. Her different experiences and loving but stern personality will assist her in being the dean of students for Wyandotte Elementary. Ladies and gentlemen, Mrs. Francois.
Good evening. First and foremost, I would like to give honor and glory to my Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. I thank him for sustaining me for 22 years to serve Saint Mary Parish as a teacher. Just can't say and express how humbled that has made me throughout the years to serve our babies in this parish. And I thank you for this opportunity to continue to serve Saint Mary Parish as dean of students at Wyandotte Elementary. Thank you and have a blessed day.
Okay, next we have Ms. Monique Este. Ms. Este began her teaching career in another district, but quickly realized that her home in Saint Mary Parish was the best, and she returned. Her certifications are in health and PE, adaptive PE, and special education. Those certifications led her to her position as a special education teacher, a coach for many of our students throughout her tenure. She also served in the United States armed services, armed forces, sorry, which we thank you for that commitment. Her experiences in the different areas will support her as the dean of students for WP Foster. Ladies and gentlemen, Ms. Monique Este.
First of all, thank y'all for this great opportunity. 24 years in the school system and able to step up into this position. Most of my career was junior high, high school, and now I'm at the elementary, and they are definitely keeping me on my toes. I'm excited and I look forward to make a difference in a bunch of kids' lives. Thank you.
Next, we have Ms. Ashley Clark. In Ms. Clark's 22 years in education, she served as a teacher, coach, athletic director, assistant principal, interim principal, and principal, all at West Saint Mary High School. So you can understand her bittersweet feeling in transitioning into her new role, but she hit the ground running. In her tenure at West Saint Mary, she and her team developed a culture that breeds successful and productive citizens. Along with her knowledge that she gained in her 22 years at West Saint Mary, her calm but stern nature will assist her in her success as a secondary supervisor. Ladies and gentlemen, Mrs. Clark.
Thank you, Ms. Este. I told you I was done crying, but thank you for that. I'd just like to thank you all for the opportunity to work with such an amazing team here at the central office. I'm gonna do my best to make everyone in Saint Mary Parish proud, and I really look forward to working with all students in Saint Mary Parish. Thank you.
Next, we have Mrs. Almitra Pierce Stansberry. Mrs. Stansberry also started her career in Saint Mary Parish as a paraprofessional. She then attained her teacher certification through alternate certification. She served as a resource teacher for many years. She earned her leadership degree through the Saint Mary Parish Educational Leader Cohort. Following that, she became assistant principal at Patterson Junior High. She is passionate about her special education background, and because of her passion, she will be an asset to our special education team. Ladies and gentlemen, our new coordinator of special services, Mrs. Almitra Pierce.
Good afternoon. I would like to say thank you to the Saint Mary Parish School Board for allowing me this opportunity to serve in this role. The last few days have been filled with collaborating with principals, administrators, guidance counselors, teachers, para educators, and all that are involved, all stakeholders. So I'm looking forward to a great 2024-25 school year, and the secondary office of special services, I'm sorry, the secondary special services department is off to a great start. Thank you.
Next, we have Ms. Jill Temporella. Ms. Temporella began her career at Morgan City Junior High as a teacher, then transferred to Berwick Junior High as a teacher. Once she completed her add-on in school counseling, she returned to Morgan City Junior High as a counselor, then transferred back to Berwick Junior High as a counselor. She likes to drive over the Morgan City Bridge. Her patience and her background of working with children will play an important role in being our new McKinney-Vento liaison. Ladies and gentlemen, Mrs. Temporella.
Thank you. I also appreciate this opportunity. As she has said, I've served at several schools, but now to be able to expand that knowledge and reach the entire parish is important to me, so I look forward to that. We're a family of educators. My mother taught in Saint Mary for over 30 years. My husband's an educator, no longer. My mother-in-law for over 30 years and tons of cousins. I'm a product of Saint Mary Parish schools. I have five children that are products of Saint Mary Parish schools, so I'm here to stay, and it's been enjoyable. Thanks.
Next, we have Ms. Suzette Chaponche. Also known as Ms. Sharp. Okay, Ms. Ponche worked in early childhood as a teacher and a director before joining the Saint Mary Parish team. She taught fourth grade, and she was a physical education teacher at Rain Tree Elementary. She then transferred to West Saint Mary as assistant principal. Prior to teaching, she was a member of the Louisiana Army National Guard, which we thank you for your service. She is a member of the New Iberia School Board and a member of the STEM Committee. All of these experiences will play an important role in her success in being principal of West Saint Mary High School. Ladies and gentlemen, Ms. Sharp.
I guess since I'm on this side of the parish, you can say Sharp Chaponche. It's okay. If you cross the parish line that way, we'll say Sharp and Chee. So, but thank you so much for the opportunity. I'm greatly humbled, and I am excited to lead the Wolf Pack in this capacity. And I promise to do my very best in continuing all the successes that we have had prior to this point. I'm really looking forward to a lot more success. Thank you.
Next, we have Mr. John Campbell. Mr. Campbell has worked as a corrections officer for LaFouche Parish Sheriff's Office, was a teacher, coach, assistant principal, principal transportation supervisor, and an official for Louisiana High School Athletic Association. He's worked with middle schools and high schools. His knowledge in education and his experience in officiating and dealing with juveniles has equipped him with the skills to be a successful assistant principal. Ladies and gentlemen, Mr. John Campbell.
Good afternoon, everyone. It's truly an opportunity to report this family and this wonderful parish. I want to thank each and every one for giving me the opportunity to work with the children of this district. I plan to work hard and to build on the success that has already been established at the West Saint Mary High School. Once again, thank you and have a lovely night.
We have Ms. Helena Salmon. Ms. Salmon started her career in education as a middle school, high, middle school social studies teacher. She taught in Terrebonne and Saint Morton and was an associate assistant principal in Assumption Parish. Prior to coming to Saint Mary, she was trained in class in NIET. She served as department head, the leadership team, district curriculum development team, was testing coordinator, SBLC and 504 coordinator. All of these positions have given her the experience needed to be an asset to Hattie Watts Elementary. Ladies and gentlemen, assistant principal, Ms. Helena Salmon.
So I didn't know I was getting up to speak tonight. But I thank you so much for the opportunity. I am absolutely loving Saint Mary Parish so far and Hattie Watts, and I look forward to continuing the success at the school and just loving on those babies every day because it's great seeing them get off the bus, and they're smiling, and they're so happy to be at school every day. So we're off to a great start, and it's just thank you for giving me the opportunity to serve the children of Saint Mary Parish.
Mr. Charles Folkard, who is not here tonight. He started his teaching career at the elementary level. He earned his M.A.S.S. in educational leadership and was assistant principal at Bay Vista Elementary, Hattie Watts Elementary, principal of JS Hernandez, and now assistant principal at Patterson Junior High. Mr. Folkard has assisted many students and teachers throughout his years in Saint Mary Parish. He has also assisted me in the past year in recruiting teachers at the university recruiting. Congratulations to Mr. Folkard, Patterson Junior High. And that's all I have for now.
Well, stay up because next we're gonna recognize our VAM four educators.
Okay, so we have Ms. Rachel Oquinn from Berwick Elementary School. Ms. Michelle Colley from B. Edward Budrill Middle School. Ms. Amy Gilliam from Franklin Junior High School. And Ms. Maybel Klein from Wyandotte Elementary School. For those of you who don't know what VAM is, that's called the value-added model, and with the evaluation system, those teachers that teach fourth grade through high school English 1, 2, Algebra I, geometry, and then U.S. history, but will be transferring, transitioning to civics, they are given a VAM score, which is based on the growth of their students. You get a score from 1 to 4, 4 being the highest. All of these ladies reached a 4 with their students last year. It's not always an easy task, but we do want to thank you for your commitment to Saint Mary Parish and all the hard work you have put in to your students and your school, so thank you.
We had recognized another group of VAM teachers earlier this summer, and we also want to make the statement that our VAM teachers who do receive a 4 get a $3,000 bonus stipend each year, that they receive it.
Okay, next up, provide information on school-based health clinics in Saint Mary Parish schools. Dr. Wilts?
He's not present this evening. We'll schedule that for next meeting. All right.
All right. Prior to this, we didn't have an amended agenda to approve, but I would actually like to ask that we do amend the agenda to add some legal discussion on some litigation that we voted for as a board earlier. So can I get... All right, Ms. Dennis makes a motion to amend to add. Ms. Brent seconds. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. It had to be unanimous, so that will be added to the agenda. Okay, approval of official school board minutes from the regular meeting July 11, 2024, and the budget workshop from July 30, 2024. What are the wishes of the board? Mr. Mancuso makes a motion to approve. Ms. Moore seconds it. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Approval of the consent agenda. The items receded with an asterisk will constitute the consent agenda with board members being able to remove any item so desired. All remaining items will constitute the finalized consent agenda and be voted on altogether. Dr. Faganbusch, please read the items on the consent agenda.
Under new business, number two, approve revised 180-day bus driver calendar for the 2024-2025 school year. 3A, ELA and Title I Liaison Index Correction, page 10. 3C, LDOE Certified and Support Staff Stipends, page 4. Under Business Affairs, number five, approve engagement of auditors to perform new agreed-upon procedures as mandated by the Louisiana Legislative Auditor for the years ended June 30, 2024, 2025, and 2026. Number six, Proclamations, A, Suicide Prevention Awareness Month, September. Seven, approve increase of visitor meal cost. Eight, approve intergovernmental agreement between Saint Mary Parish Sheriff's Office and Saint Mary Parish School Board for school resource officers K-9 services, and that ends the consent agenda.
Great, thank you. What are the wishes of the board? Ms. LaSalle? Okay, so 3C and 7, correct? Okay, perfect. 3C and 7. Any other board members wishing to pull anything off of the consent agenda? Okay, all remaining items. What are the wishes of the board? Ms. Moore makes a motion to approve. Mr. Mancuso seconds it. Any discussion or questions? All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, first up, under new business personnel, number one, approval of policies from Fourth Thought Consulting as revised by Hammons and Seals and reviewed by the Saint Mary Parish School Board Policy Committee. Ms. Este.
Okay, for the policies, item 1A. The buildings and grounds management. They just added in the title of smoking, tobacco, they added marijuana use on school board property. And then in the second paragraph under that title, the use of tobacco products, smokeless tobacco, or marijuana products of any form were added to the policy. Are we going one of the...
Under the paragraph, the second... But other than that, all of the changes directly out of the law, it was reviewed by counsel and recommended by legal counsel, so I mean, I'd be okay with it. I can make that motion.
Mr. Mancuso makes a motion to approve the policies under number 1A3. Ms. Jones seconds it. Any questions or discussions? All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Well said, Mr. Mancuso. All right, next up. Approved revisions of the Saint Mary Parish School Board Comprehensive Salary and Classification 2024-2025 Gold Book B, Salary Schedule, Milestone Recognition, Act 10, 2030. Ms. Este.
Okay, so in the Gold Book, on page 12, well, let's start with... You want to go in order or...
Let me just...
Page three, which is the salary schedule. I'll turn that over to Dr. Faganbusch.
Actually, the page numbers are just a reference to the different salary schedules, which were already in our gold book. We are just asking at this time, with our least, recently from review, we were told that 20 to 25% of our employees in the next three to five years will be at retirement age. Also, to be competitive with our more experienced personnel in our neighboring districts, we would like to add a milestone recognition as Act 10, 20, and 30, and this would be for support and degree personnel.
All right, what are the wishes of the board? Mr. Parity? Okay, all right, Mr. Parity makes that motion. Ms. Brent makes a second. Any questions or discussions? Mr. Mancuso.
Similar to the original salary, I need to abstain because immediate family member are being employed by Saint Mary Parish.
Ms. LaSalle?
It's shown in every single salary schedule, like all those page numbers that are there that references the salary schedule. And it shows the increase in that within the schedule itself. Well, it depends on the actual salary schedule. For the teacher salary schedule, originally those steps were $450, so for those years, it will be 625?
75.
675. I was trying to add my... I'm sorry, secondary school, so... But no, so yeah, so 675, just on those years, and then every year after that, it will be 450 again. And then it varies for support staff depending on what their steps are at 10, 20, and 30 for them, they've been doubled. So it varies by the salary schedule, which is why they were all included in this document.
Is that the way other boards do it? There's no record that will tell us how much money we're claiming right here. I don't think we're being fiscally responsible by just approving a blank in the amount.
You mean the overall budget?
Not the budget, but the amount for this particular item.
It's not, ma'am.
It's not, ma'am. If you go into the book, it says for every single salary schedule, you see the highlighted blue?
The highlighted blue.
The highlighted blue show every...
It's 291.
It's 291, 291,000, around 260, 261 steps.
Okay. It was in our documentation. Perfect, thank you.
Perfect, thank you. Now I don't remember where we're at. We have a motion to second. Any other question or question?
It varies.
It varies because when we're talking about support, this actually affects every single employee. Because every salary is going to be included.
We do, we have the documentation that I can pull all already now to tell you those specific numbers. Do I go ahead and open them? No, I can open them. But I can get that for you.
But I can get that.
All right, any other questions?
Any other questions?
All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. All right.
All right. That's the LDOE Certified Support Staff Stipends. Okay, so on page four. On the salary. We had to change where we're giving that state size number, 2,000, 1,000. We had to make it all in the first semester. So that change is just an update to follow the requirement of the LDOE. And just for clarification, we did not get that update until just recently, in our new business call. Yes, ma'am. That's what you usually did in the past, but recent state items from the LDOE told us that would change this year in our August business call, so we have to make that adjustment. All right, any other... What are the wishes of the board? Ms. LaSalle makes a motion to approve. Ms. Moore seconds it. Any discussions or questions? All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Number four, under Business Affairs, discuss annual day action regarding resolutions provided for the selection of the Saint Mary Parish School Board representative. Sentiment to the Saint Mary Parish Industrial Taxation Program, ITEP, committee, according to executive board.
So this is not a voting on an ITEP, so you can all rest easy today. But I do want to just also wish my, I guess, express my sentiments for having a good school year and a good start of the year and congratulate all the new appointments. Several of them taught me when I was in school, and they're great teachers. I'm really confident in the direction the school system here is going. So really, this is just kind of...
Excuse me, Mr. Budrill. I think you had a pretty good principal at one time.
I definitely agree. I think I had a fantastic principal. So this is basically just to kind of talk about the new process under which Governor Landry's executive order, how the ITEP rules will be changed, the approval process. So under... So under Governor Edwards's executive order in 2016, ITEP applications would then be sent to each individual governing body for their individual approval. Governor Landry has changed that to where there will be one committee made up of representatives from each of the local government bodies that will have an approval, up or down vote. And depending on that local decision, it then goes to the governor to make the ultimate decision. So if this local committee does say to deny an ITEP, the governor can't overrule that local committee's recommendation. It has to be unanimous, I'm sorry, not unanimous vote, it's a complete vote. Meaning, say the committee recommends adoption or approval of an ITEP application, then it applies to everybody. It won't be if the school board representative votes no, but everyone else votes yes, the school board will still receive 100% of their property taxes, whereas the other ones would, you know, receive the 80%. In the governor's executive order, it specified that the school board representative can either be the superintendent or the school board president, but it has to be selected by the board through resolution, hence what you're voting on tonight. And that's essentially the gist of it, but if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Does this negate the contract that we signed?
No, ma'am. So this would only apply for ITEP applications that would be pursued after the governor's executive order. So anything before whatever the date was, still applies to the old rules.
Any other questions or discussion?
Can we nominate now?
Can we?
Resolution. The resolution provides that the superintendent will be the representative of the board on that committee. And the president would be the alternate.
All right, Mr. Mancuso?
Make a motion to approve the resolution.
Ms. Moore seconds. Mr. Mancuso made the motion. Ms. Moore seconds. Any discussion or questions? All those in favor say aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
All right.
Right, next will be to approve the increase of visitor meal cost.
Ms. Shaq.
Ms. Shaq. Good evening. To participate in the school records program and the national school line program, our visitor meal cost, an extra meal cost must be equal to or greater than the average meal cost. Our average car year breakfast meal cost was 34.5. The average car year lunch meal cost was $5.16. We currently charge 35.5 for breakfast, so that one is within the legal limits. Our meal current charge for that extra visitor meal cost is 475 for lunch. This does not meet the rule requirements. And therefore, our request to increase the lunch meal price for visitors from 475 to 525, 50 cents increase. And leave the breakfast meal the same. And this will put us in the legal limits for this thing. Thank you. I just think that when we have something that's hard dollars, that should be a consent agenda item. If we're going to be successful, it's not money, but it's money just the same. And I think the public needs to know that differently as well. Thank you for the information. All right, Ms. LaSalle makes the motion. Mr. Mancuso seconds it. Any discussion?
All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Next up is the amended report of the agenda on the opioid litigation.
Madam President, members of the board, you may recall several months ago, the board voted to participate in a class action lawsuit seeking damages from certain corporations with regard to opioid-related issues. As a result of that, that hiatus has now entered into a proposal, which is a settlement agreement with one of those defendants, Kroger company. And they are asking now for the board's agreement for that to participate in that settlement. I have found a little more information that you had a few minutes ago. Mr. Mancuso asked me if I knew the, to have money for all. Settlement requires Kroger to pay 1.2 billion dollars.
That will go into the fund to pay to participating states and political subdivisions of the states to remediate and abate the impacts of the opioid crisis. Also, it contains injunctive relief governing opioid dispensing practices and requires Kroger to implement safeguards to prevent diversion of prescription opioids. So the deal is, is that if your state participated, then you have the chance to participate in recovery of some of the settlement. Louisiana did. If your political subdivision participates, you have the right chance to participate in some of the settlement. And this board did. And so what happens, the money is divvied up, goes back to the state, and then the state divides the money between the various political subdivisions. The more subdivisions that support the settlement, the more money the state gets. And so that means a bigger piece of the pie. And I can't see any reason why the board would not want to enter into this settlement. Again, the money received will be primarily for purposes of opioid education programs, but that's what it was designed to do. And what we're looking for tonight is for you to authorize your president to sign off on that particular settlement on behalf of your board. The reason for the hurry is because the deadline is August the 12th. And so with this reason, we put it on, added it to the agenda tonight, so you could go ahead and take care of it while you were in an official board meeting.
Ms. LaSalle? Ms. LaSalle makes a motion to approve that. Ms. Brent makes a second. Any discussion or questions? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, next, under.
Under staff reports, which is my next office, Mr. Perry.
Just a couple things. First, money for sales tax payment. And it's pretty much on budget. We collect 246,000, first month, 250,000. So that's a decent start. Financial statements are in the package. And I wanted to remind everybody that the September 12th board meeting is when we officially drop the budget. There'll be a vote here at 5:15, where the public is allowed to have input on the budget. And there'll be a resolution in the package we voted on at 5:15. And that's all I have.
Next, our superintendent's reporting, Dr. Fagan Bush.
Yesterday was the first day of the 24-25 school year. I want to extend a huge thank you to everyone for the incredible energy, enthusiasm, and effort that made the first day of the 24-25 school year so fantastic. From the bright smiles and smooth transitions, it was clear that a lot of heart was preparing for the opening day. It was truly uplifting to see everything come together so far.
Thank you to our school families for the success of yesterday. Here's to a wonderful year ahead. As you're aware, we conducted a re-enrollment process for the 24-25 school year. As of 5:00 PM today, 240 of our 7,223 students have not completed re-enrollment. However, for families whose physical residence has been verified but who still need to provide partial required documentation, we have provisionally enrolled those students to ensure we can continue assisting them in completing the documents, documentation requirements successfully. A huge thank you to our schools and the offices of Dr. Sanders and Mr. Holmes for their help and support. As previously reported, 17 St. Mary Parish school sites received safety grants totaling over $1 million from the governor's Office of Homeland Security and Emergency Preparedness. The five remaining schools are in the second round of consideration for budgeting. As a result, schools this week began receiving open gate walkthrough security systems that will enhance school safety for daily operations and school events. These devices will greatly ease the intake process for our children and school community fans. Administrators will begin training next week so that the devices can be ready for operation soon in a school, dear you. Lastly, I want to express our heartfelt gratitude to the members of the Ministerial Alliance and everyone who participated in the prayer tour for our schools as we embarked on this new school year. Their sincere support for St. Mary's students and staff underscores their commitment to public education, and we deeply appreciate it. That is my report.
Thank you. All right, last is our closing. Can we get a motion to adjourn following the resolutions of respect? Ms. Brent makes that motion. Ms. Moore seconds. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, Ms. Estee?
In memoriam of Lois Hawkins, a retired home economics teacher, Ms. Joyce Madison Jones, retired school paraprofessional, Ms. Barbara Thibodeau, retired school cafeteria technician, and Mr. Minus Robertson, Jr., retired high school math teacher. Whereas Almighty God in His infinite wisdom has taken from our midst, and whereas their untimely death has deprived the St. Mary Parish school system of these beloved colleagues. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the St. Mary Parish School Board and the people attending this meeting bow our heads in silent prayer out of respect and extend to the bereaved families our sincere condolences and express the high regard in which we held each of them in life and honor their memory in death. Let us adjourn this meeting out of respect for Lois Hawkins, Joyce Madison Jones, Barbara Thibodeau, and Minus Robertson, Jr. Amen.